Nine o'clock, I'll call a meeting to order. You have the agenda before you.
I'll prove the debate motion approve the tentative agenda.
Second. Have a motion and second to the agenda is presented. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carry. You would read the minutes of the August seventh meeting.
August seventh, twenty twenty-three, Chairman Cluse called the regular meeting of the Wright County Board of Supervisors order at nine a.m. Members present were Cluse, Rasmussen, and Helgaboll. Motion by Helgaboll, second by Rasmussen, to approve the tentative agenda with tabling items number nine, considering resolution twenty-three, twenty twenty-three dash thirty-three, and item number ten, second and final reading of the proposed ordinance number sixty-six to August fourteenth. Supervisor Rasmussen and Adam Clemens, Wright County engineer, will meet with Summit Carbon Solutions and Gold Eagle Co-op to discuss crossings. Motion carries with Cluse opposing. Motion by the, uh, motion of the previous regular meeting of July thirty-first, twenty twenty-three, and special meeting of August second, twenty twenty-three, were read and approved. Approved claims for payment. In open forum, Betty Ellis and Bob Ritter spoke about concerns with tabling items nine and ten on the agenda. Tony Nicholas, Wright County assessor, presented additional homestead credits and sixty-five plus homestead exemptions for approval denial. Uh, these were postmarked before July first and were received at the end of July. Motion by Rasmussen, seconded by Helgaboll, to approve or disapprove upon the assessor's recommendations on the homestead credits and sixty-five plus homestead exemptions. Motion carries. The board acting as trustees of the Drainage District meant to review an act on tabled agenda item from July thirty-first to receive an update on the petition for repair on December, uh, on DD thirty-six sub one. Lateral A involving railroad property and taking possible action. Cluse began the discussion by stating a notice has been prepared and discussion is ongoing with Drainage Attorney David Johnson as to what documents need to be included and how uh, the notice should be served. Uh, then there was a motion by Cluse, second by Helgaboll, to table discussion and place it on the agenda for August fourteenth, twenty twenty-three to allow for further discussions with Drainage Attorney David Johnson prior to action being taken. Motion carry. Uh, Clemens presented the twenty twenty-three standing corn snow fence policy. The policy will reflect the higher of the two cooperatives in Wright County on August first. Gold Eagle Cooperative had a price of five dollars eighty-nine cents average on August, um, first, plus the two dollars per bushel premium. The average yield was pulled from the USDA Wright County average with two oh nine point seven bushels an acre. Motion by Rasmussen, seconded by Helgaboll, to approve the two twenty twenty-three standing corn snow fence for two hundred and ten bushels per acre at seven dollars eighty-nine cents per bushel. Motion carries. Clemens gave an update on the secondary roads. There were twenty-seven work orders completed last week with fourteen being service on vehicles. Mowing of the granular routes is now complete. Uh, year three scheduled gravel ha- has one hundred and four of the one hundred and twenty-six segments completed. Crews are, um, crack sealing on, um, R fifty-nine while the road is closed for the bridge replacement. Construction is continuing on, um, R fifty-nine bridge replacement with the curtain walls and the west side floor being poured. Motion by Rasmussen, seconded by Helgaboll, to adjourn the meeting. Motion carries.
Any additions or corrections? Harry, no, no, stand and approve this, as, uh, red. Claims for payment have been around. There were five signatures. Open forum for public input. I'll tell you something about permits. August second. Don't let her be a murder. This to, uh, just by, uh, public use. And, uh, table four, they listed, uh, federal state permits needed, required six federal permits, thirteen state permits. And I think some of those categories are model permits. And they said they work, uh, work with county and local officials for additional permits. But they don't have those permits yet. They didn't do very well for Dakota getting their permit. And on the, uh, AMZ file, which is a projection of the pipeline on, uh, Google Earth. They show the pipeline as a red line and then the parcels, they're subject to this age. There were red blocks or green or purple blocks. And South Garner across railroad track, they showed just a red line showing they've got permission. But two days ago, I think, uh, what was it, uh? Yeah, the railroad going through there, uh, by one northern railway filed an objection. And it doesn't sound like someone's gonna get permit to go through there. The, um, when you go into one ninety-nine, uh, Iowa Administrative Code one ninety-nine, the, the Summit Carbon Solutions isn't required to request uh, permission to cross the railroad, railroad right-of-way until after the permit is, uh, is done. Uh, that's what I, yeah. Bill.
If I'm responding down at Bill Sullivan with Summit Carbon Solutions, we represent, or I'm sorry, but turn people just, we represent Summit Carbon Solutions for the non-environmental permitting. And to actually address what you said, I saw the same thing from Iowa Northern Railway and investigated that with my permitting manager who does the, uh, railroads across the project. We actually have been negotiating on a crossing with all the railroads on across the five-state area. They actually did not object to the permit that we submitted to them. They actually had just a general objection, uh, that they wanted information on because the exhibit H letters were sent out and because they're an easement on a property, they got one of those letters and so they were just asking about it. Um, I want to point out that of the sixty-plus railroad companies that we, you know, that have the same thing, they're used to seeing these things. Whenever there's an eminent domain project, they have to send out like these letters and they have to go to the easement holders on the property that have, you know, any rights on the property and that includes easement holders, not including group railways as well. So a lot of them are used to getting these letters, but it didn't hear from the other sixty-plus you just heard from Iowa because they just weren't used to that and we have since contacted them. So I hope that information helps.
Doesn't convince me that. But you haven't, you don't have permission.
Uh, we're applying for permission and it's, it's business as usual. Um, we have a lot of our railroad permits already and that one is one that we anticipate getting as well. We don't see any difficulties with it.
You didn't see any difficulties to go to.
We're working on that one as well.
So you haven't got. Anything else, Robert? No.
Couple of questions for some of it again.
Yes.
My imagination, you're going pole the ground, you're putting carbon dioxide in like a cave. Okay, to me, it could wander here and there from ground down to that cave be seventy-five feet to the hole. The next place over here is three hundred feet from the hole. It's like round above the hole.
No.
Is it gonna seep up through?
The geological formation is approximately, you know, two miles underneath the, the surface of there.
Okay, but is, is eventually gonna fill up?
The projected storage available in North Dakota is up to two hundred and fifty billion metric tons for CO2 storage. We have just over one point six billion leased at this point. Uh, if we needed to extend that, then we absolutely would be able to.
So from the top of the ground to the top, I'll, it's gonna be many, many feet or miles or something?
Yes, approximately two miles.
If I may, please don't think of it like it's a cave. It's not, it sounded like an open formation. It's basically like a, a very porous rock formation, but these geological features exist of in varying degrees and capabilities. This one just happens to fit this fifty-four suit this use, but you know, think about anywhere where natural gas drilling is done. Those are also like a semi-forest rock formation like that. Whereas, you know, it's not like just it's an open cavity or something. So you know, the amount of, I'm not a geologist and I'm certainly not an expert in the matter, but the amount of drift you know, that you're indicating, um, you know, we have had the experts looking at it. And you know, it's again, it appears to be, uh, by all our, you know, research and the research done on behalf of the project, you know, a very safe and stable formation for exactly such a purpose, which is why we chose it.
And the second question, um, the president of Canada, I heard in a radio interview, and I saw whether, take it for what it's worth. He was concerned that like carbon dioxide gets up there. It's gonna be used for oil fields, could be used in oil fields extract more oil out of the ground. Or is it all hundred percent gonna be in that camera?
Will be a hundred, a hundred percent will be permanently suppressed. I mean, the, the whole benefit that we're trying to push across with this project is it's benefiting that ethanol plants by allowing them to lower that carbon intensity score and part of that being able to lower that intensity score is that the CO2 is utilized for permanent sequestration.
Won't be used for any other use. Okay.
At this time.
Pardon?
At this time, he said.
Okay, yeah, there's the question mark.
I just want to start off and say thank you to all you guys for all the hard work you're doing on this. I appreciate it. I know you read all the filings themselves. Actually, we got a couple more counties to come over with. Basically, I just want to talk about Wright County here. Uh, last week Adam mentioned, uh, and someone was really upset about not getting a file for these, uh, permit, uh, permission, permits. And Adam hadn't given them, or you guys hadn't allowed, however you're gonna, however it works, but the uh, main thing was Adam was a hundred percent right because they have not been deemed a public utility. And they're concerned of a private. So anyway, I just appreciate you guys all working on everything and, uh, trying to get it done right. If this thing is, if it gets done right, but there's, um, I'm gonna play like I'm telling now, there's a few other things going on and some other people that would, I can't disclose yet, that will happen here in the next few months. It's gonna take place and so as we get done with the kangaroo court that the state's running, then we'll get into the real court system and it's gonna change things. So thank you for all your hard work.
You know, just to clarify, uh, the reason that we hadn't acted on, uh, the the submission of the right-of-way crossing, uh, permits was because, um, at that time we didn't have, I think it's a landowner's signature which is required because although we are, I don't know the proper word to use. I'm not gonna use the right word. I know that. In charge of the right-of-way, although we are responsible for the right-of-ways, we do not have the underlying uh, property rights to that. The landowner retains that. Um, and so without either a a signed easement or a signature of the landowner, um, then we couldn't act on that either.
But you'll have, the next problem will be you'll have to get the, uh, eminent domain board. Uh, okay.
Yeah.
Well, second, let me set the box that scared you about your going through all this. Thank you for the work you're doing.
That's why we're here, so. Okay, any other public comments? Todd, did you have anything for us?
Okay, I'm supporting you guys.
Sure.
Appreciate it.
Okay. Uh, item number six, reviewing it. I guess I shouldn't check to see if, don't see any comments on the chat box. Reviewing and act on liquor license for Nick's tipsy trailer near Eagle Grove.
Absolutely.
Oops. Austin, or Austin, did you have a comment for uh, under the public comments?
Austin on Zoom? You may not have been muted.
Yeah. So, uh, is this a, like a a physical location or this is a
Yeah.
a mobile?
It's a physical location.
It is?
And it is, um, a couple of miles south of Eagle Grove on Highway seventeen on the east side of the road.
It's temporary five days, but I'm not sure whether
but, uh, they had proof of drab shopping.
Correct, yeah, it's ready to go.
Oh, yeah, especially recently back September fifth through the eighth.
I'll make a motion to approve. Sorry.
Yeah, a motion, a second to approve a five-day liquor license from September uh, third through the September eighth for Nick's tipsy trailer. Uh, all those in favor say aye. Rick?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carry.
Up top.
Thank you. Item number seven, review and act on the agribusiness park maintenance agreement. So currently, uh, our tenant for the last three years, uh, is Nick Christensen. The original contract again was for a three-year period. There was no, uh, fees charged to him as rent, but he was to, uh, establish alfalfa. And then for those three years, he could, uh, take the cuttings off of that. This, uh, lease expires on October seventh. Obviously Iowa State law says that, uh, you need to notify by, I believe it's August fifteenth, um, to terminate a lease. And, um, we've got a, a letter prepared. Um, but in doing that, I thought that we should have a discussion on, okay, what are we gonna do now? We've got alfalfa established there. Um, do we put it up for bid? Do we offer it to Nick for a certain price? Uh, I've gone on the Iowa State website for their ag rental rates for two thousand and thirteen and of course the northern and most of the central districts don't list cash rent on hay or oats or pasture ground. Um, but if you go down to the southern tariff counties where there's a lot of CRP and a lot of grazing, um, there is some information available. Uh, average in uh, in the district for alfalfa hay established is, uh, a hundred and ninety-four dollars an acre is the cash rent. I think it com- it's comprised of
Sixty-seven.
Thirty-seven acres, yeah. So.
And you've done a good job. You've cleaned, he's been mowing the ditches. I wouldn't mind giving him an opportunity to, to continue, but um, I think Belmont, their industrial park out there, they run out there.
Both industrial park and the water treatment plant, you know. We do a three-year lease. That way they invest in fertilizer, they have profit the next two years. Uh, I'm asking the board to go up the bid.
You want to, uh, let it have first write or refusal on it? Any thoughts of that? Cause he's been, uh, he's been a good tenant. Every time we've asked him to do something, he's done, he's done his.
Yeah, I'd like to see him get first chance again, that.
Well, then are you going to set a rate? Uh, because if you're gonna, if you're gonna offer it in that way, you need to determine a rate. You can't allow him to set that rate.
You know what you get over there?
I have a email in right now.
Okay.
Table it for, uh, how about if we send notification of termination?
Then we can kind of go for it. At least we're squared away on that.
For a week to determine uh, how to proceed. Okay.
Make a motion to table for a week. Sorry.
Uh, with sending the
With sending that termination notice.
Okay.
Yeah.
I have a motion as second to send a termination notice for the current contract, three-year contract, uh, and to table uh, decision on, uh, proceeding with the, the next contract. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion carry. Yeah, item number eight, uh.
Do you want to give them an update that you did send on the county farm?
Uh, yes, and we did send, uh, termination notification for the county farm, which is our normal procedure. Uh, that letter was sent out. So that'll be coming back up. We'll have to make a decision on, uh, bid times, uh, when they're due, all of that. Um, item number eight. Uh, here an update on tabled agenda item for, from July thirty-first and August seventh, a petition to repair in DD thirteen sub one lateral A involving railroad property. So with the passage of, I forget the house file now, but, uh, anyway, it requires you to notify the railroad now and they have thirty days from the date of notification to effect an, a repair. Otherwise, then we're allowed to affect the, the repair. This is just, um, this property is south of, excuse me, west of Clarion, uh, out around where Maury Brandt lives. Um, it's within the railroad right-of-way. It's a suckhole that's there. Uh, we did the research, um, through the Secretary of State and found the actual person to notify, um, which is kind of, it's listed as the railroad as the property owner and then there's a a corporation under that, then you then look for that and this person's in, uh, New York. And so that notification has been sent. We'll wait until it's actually served and that they receive it and then the thirty-day clock starts. So the notification has been sent.
Okay.
Okay, our next item is a timed event, nine thirty. Uh, we will stand in recess until, uh, nine twenty-nine.
Yeah. That's the next thing. I was told we couldn't. So then they said, no.
Nine thirty, uh, we'll come back into session. Item number nine, discuss and act on tabled agenda from item from August seventh to consider second and final reading of proposed ordinance number sixty-six and ordinance repealing and replacing Wright County ordinance number eighteen and ordinance to protect and regulate secondary roads right-of-way and enacting a new right-of-way control ordinance to regulate certain uses and occupancies of county right-of-way. I would make a motion to approve uh, the second reading, second and final reading of ordinance number sixty-six.
And I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second to approve the second and final reading of ordinance number sixty-six. All those in favor?
How'd, how'd your meeting go?
Meeting went very well. Uh, we got a lot of things clarified. I think we had a great meeting, you guys as well.
Yes, sir.
We, we had a really good meeting. I do think we need to look at some other things, uh, that could help us out countywide. And we'll be probably talking to, uh, economic development as well as the, uh, conservation.
Any further discussion? On our ordinance, uh, I've got a procedural question. Does that require roll call vote? Does, okay, thank you. Um, I have a motion as second to approve the second and final reading of ordinance number sixty-six and ordinance repealing and replacing Wright County ordinance number eighteen and ordinance to protect and regulate secondary roads right-of-way and enacting a new right-of-way control ordinance to regulate certain uses and occupancies of county right-of-way by roll call vote. Carl?
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
Dean?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number ten, discuss an act on tabled agenda from item from August seventh to consider resolution twenty twenty-three dash thirty-three setting fee schedule for right-of-way occupancy and use permits, right-of-way uh, work permits, entrance permits and, uh, to perform work in the county road right-of-way and right-of-way inspections. So resolution twenty twenty-three dash thirty-three. We did this by resolution so that if, um, if it needs to be changed, we don't have to go through all the readings of the ordinance. The resolution can be changed by, uh, by the board taking action on it. Okay. I would make a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty twenty-three dash thirty-three, a rose, resolution setting fee schedule for the right-of-way occupancy and use permits right-of-way work permits, entrance permits, permits to perform work in the county road right-of-way and right-of-way inspections.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Okay, by roll call vote, uh, Carl?
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
Dean?
Aye.
Motion carried. And, uh, meetings.
I had nothing last week, but I've got, uh, Eldora this Friday.
Okay.
At ten o'clock.
Economic development, you want to, the highlights? Uh, we will be approaching the board in the next couple of weeks on, uh, the three loans that we issued, Clarion, Belmont, and Eagle Grove on the COVID money. Uh, our commission, my commission did, uh, wanted to make those, uh, those funds available and, uh, le- lessen the restrictions. It, it is, it provides no benefit for Wright County and Wright County economic development that they have those mighty city of account and not be utilized. So in the next couple of weeks, I'll be approaching the board for, for your approval.
Yeah, and that's something you talked about
Yes.
a couple of weeks ago.
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
I think there's a lot more restrictions on some of those dollars originally. Right, we kind of modeled after that and things have changed over time.
And was that, uh, were those monies part of, uh, COVID?
No, no, no. Good, good. Those are money's coming out of my revolving loan plan, uh, that, which is what the county's portion.
Okay.
We kind of tailor-mated it based on the, uh, some of the restrictions when the COVID money first came out.
Right. So I have, uh, nothing this week. Next week is a busy week. Uh, I think for all of us, um, the thirty-first is the, um, excuse me, the twenty, the twenty-first, Monday evening at three thirty is the, um, they're gonna go through the procedures for the hearings for the exhibit H landowners at the Cardiff Center. Um, that is not open to the public, but it is open to exhibit H landowners, uh, interveners, um, which we are an intervener. Um, I'm gonna attempt to be over there to hear what the schedule is gonna be like and how it will operate. Um, and then of course, on August twenty-second, Tuesday is the first hearings, uh, for the exhibit H landowners. Um, I've talked with, uh, Tim Whipple to see if, if it was a requirement that we be present or have somebody there present. I plan to be there on the twenty-second, but that's also, uh, that evening starts ISAT conference down in Des Moines. So I don't know if I'll be down to Des Moines on Tuesday. I may wait and come down on Wednesday, cause it's Wednesday, Thursday, Friday down there soon. What the schedule looks like right now. We will be in recess until, uh, item number eleven is a ten a.m., uh, Drainage District one oh seven lateral one landowner informational meeting concerning a work order for repair to a drainage just ditch crossing on private property. We will stand in recess until, uh, nine fifty-eight. Okay, it is, uh, ten oh one, actually. Uh, I will call the meeting back. Ten oh one actually, uh I will call the meeting back to order. Um we are putting on our trustees hats and acting as trustees. Ten AM hold the DG one oh seven lateral one landowner information meeting concerning a work order for repair to drainage ditch crossing on private property. I guess, Dave, you wanna give any background to this?
So we had a meeting uh two weeks ago on the work order and the work order was approved. And we set this for an informational hearing on if any landowners had any questions about this because there's been a lot of history to this issue. And that's really all it is. Now, what happens a lot of times is you will get a request for a repair or an improvement. And you will task the engineer with preparing an engineer's report if it's going to be above the threshold requirement for hearings. The engineer will file a report telling you what needs to be fixed. And then you tentatively approve that report in this form saying that it looks like it's a valid form. And then you set it for the public hearing and the lenders can come and comment, object and so forth. This is not that kind of hearing. This is not a hearing to reconsider the work order. The work order has been approved. But this is the opportunity for landowners in that lateral area that will be assessed for the repair in case they have any questions. So that's really what this informational meeting is for today.
No, it is not up or uh remonstrance because it is a repair. Um so uh one of the general questions that obviously would be asked is, well, is this a drainage district asset or is this uh a private asset? And and that has not been determined. The uh the district recognizes that they must allow a landowner to have entrance to their property, which is landlocked uh across the other side of the ditch. There's been previous litigation uh concerning this crossing. And I guess I would leave that unless anybody has any questions concerning that. The part, uh will you discuss uh what we received from by Dan McClure, I think, is he on? Dan, are you on?
Did you want to report on what Dan?
Right, right.
So more than two weeks ago, prior to the hearing on the work order. We had investigated the possibility of repairing the crossing because we knew this issue was going to be coming up. And so Dan Wagmeyer.
Oh, Weedmeyer.
Weedmeyer.
With McClure Engineer.
He contacted contractors advising or requesting quotes or estimates on what it would cost to repair the culvert and the crossing. And he received responses from three contractors and one in particular who he assured us was a very reputable contractor had come in between thirty and thirty-five thousand dollars which is below the threshold amount necessary for having even a hearing on it. And so based upon that and based upon the potential for further litigation, it was my uh opinion and my advice to the board that it would probably be cheaper to fix the land crossing than to pay attorney fees to defend another lawsuit. Because you could have a lawsuit and you don't know if you're going to win or lose a lawsuit. So you could spend fifty thousand dollars on a lawsuit and may not prevail and then have to turn around and spend thirty to thirty-five thousand on the crossing anyway. So was my advice to the board that it would be uh more prudent in their position as trustees for the landowners to be as efficient as possible. And you go with certainty and to fix it if the cost was that reasonable, I would say. And I say reasonable because over the past couple of years, this thing's been going around. We had one opinion from our county engineer that if we moved it the cost would be around a hundred thousand dollars. So we were always afraid of a hundred thousand dollar repair bill. Well, without moving it to another location, if we just repair, replace the culvert and the land crossing, we got this favorable quote from a reputable company that it would be relatively reasonable and and probably less than litigation. So my advice to you is that um my my advice is that just a cost benefit analysis kind of makes it a no brainer to say, let's just fix it. And uh we don't have to litigate the issue about whether it's a district asset or whether it's privately owned or not.
Questions?
Who is the contractor that is going to be used?
That's why I was hoping that we had that letter.
He didn't provide the name of the contractor.
He did not?
No.
He's he's he told us that it was. And um oh wait, you now have to get that to us and get started.
There are no comments uh or no questions. I would move that uh that we proceed with uh the lowest quote uh that McClure provided to repair the land bridge on uh Drainage District one oh seven. And I think that that is known as lateral one, correct?
And I don't, and I don't know that the motion is even necessary because two weeks ago, you already approved the work order.
Okay.
So now it's just the logistics of Dan. That I think that's repetitive to have that motion.
Okay, alright. Well, guys, for lack of a second.
I think it was more just to bring the landowners together to let them know what was going on, kind of an update.
Did we get an answer to the question?
What was?
The name of the contractor?
No, you did not get an answer.
I thought we will not get an answer to that.
No, I don't know. I don't know. Dan wasn't on the on the Zoom call. He had it, yeah.
Are there any specs or plans for this that we can look at as to the size of the culvert going to be used or any of that kind of stuff?
Uh if my memory serves me correct, it's a uh the current culvert is a forty-eight inch. Sixty inch that's collapsed. I don't remember if it was a eighty-four or a hundred and two inch uh culvert that would go in there.
We wanted to avoid twenty thousand dollar engineer's report. So we are just relying upon Dan to, we 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 were very stringent with him on on the call to making sure that the contractor knows exactly what we want without having to incur the expense of having the engineer prepare a culvert and engineer's report. So we are uh assured by Dan that the contractor knows exactly what we want. That's a solid quote slash bid and we're just proceeding with the repair.
And who will be warranting that work? The contractor, the district or?
Under normal circumstances, the contractor that does the work, there's fault. It's if you go back on the contractor that does the work. The district doesn't want it working.
Right.
And when we receive the paperwork, it will be made available. At least we're not hiding anything. We don't have anything. We're just relying upon the engineer to do this quick and easy.
Yeah.
But we'll share whatever we have when it comes in. And I've been in contact with your attorney Bob Woodman. I told him the same thing.
I saw that. Then we told you was on a stand-up the last time. What's going to make you think it's going to stand up this next time?
It's the job of the engineer and the contractor to put in the proper size culvert and to make it so it can carry equipment. Uh we're going to make sure they do their job. And if they don't do their job, then there will be the normal remedies associated with that. There's a breach in contract. Well, we are that's a question that's not even on the table yet, but you're you're anticipating a breakdown five, ten, twenty years from now.
When you did the work across this uh across from, but we said it was the moment last. And we, I just don't do this again.
We're also wondering if it is going to create, if it has been engineered or their specs to prove that it's not going to be a dam so that Milton isn't going to be because it got opened quite a bit up at the north above Milton Roberts. And then just to the north of us. And we just want to make sure that as a good neighbor, he's not also experiencing more flooding.
Yeah, let's let the contractor and engineer do their job.
Yep.
And if you have concerns, you let us know what they are.
Okay.
Listen, we can't, we can't. We can't go into the future and fix problems that haven't even arisen yet. So let's just do this like we do every other job. Let's see how it goes. If you see problems, you guys can alert those, alert us to any problems that you see.
Okay.
And we'll just do it like we do everything else.
Picking off our uh adjourn trustees, yeah, adjourn from the trustees uh meeting. Motion to adjourn from the trustees meeting.
Second.
Motion and a second to adjourn from the trustees meeting acting as trustees for drainage district uh one zero seven. All those in favor say aye. Motion carried. That was our last item on the agenda.
Motion to adjourn.
I have a motion is our second.
Sorry again.
I have a motion and a second to adjourn as the supervisors. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried.
I won't step on my ladders.
Take care, everybody.
Yeah, thank you.